All right, everyone ready to be counted in?
Yes.
Okay, and in five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Welcome everyone to tonight's regular virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We had a closed session at six and we're turning now for the the main session. The how to participate can be found at the end of the agenda packet. And we're under the Zoom webinar kind of rules here. So at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. And could we do the pledge of allegiance, please? You can follow me, I'll say it out loud, the rest of you can go on mute if you need to. So. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, could city attorney give us a report out of any action taken in the closed session, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Alcala, your city attorney. I am happy to report on the following items relative to one of your litigation matters. This is with regard to the case entitled N Ray National Prescription Opiate Litigation. In close session, the city council took two reportable actions. First, the city council authorized me, city attorney Jason Alcala, to register the city of Livermore to opt into the two proposed nationwide settlement agreements that obligate the three largest pharmaceutical distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, to pay up to affected agencies pay up to 21 billion over 18 years, as well as a settlement agreement with manufacturer Johnson Pharmaceuticals and its parent company Johnson Johnson, to pay up to 5 billion over nine years for use by states, counties, and cities persisting in the settlements to remediate and obey the impacts of the opioid crisis. Second, the city council authorized city manager Mark Bobbers, or his designee, to sign on behalf of the city of Livermore any and all documents necessary for the city to participate in the settlements, provided documents have been approved as deformed by the city attorney or his designee, and to place on a future city council agenda appropriate resolutions authorizing the signing of the final settlement agreements. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We're on now to agenda item 3.1. It's proclamations and presentations in this particular Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center annual update, provided by executive director Chris Carter. So you're up, Chris.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm not sure if I can turn my video on or not, but I guess I'll just do it without video, if that's okay.
I think so.
Okay, well, thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you for letting me be first on the agenda. I do appreciate that for sure. I know you have a busy night. It's I'm happy to, by the way, I'm always happy to meet or talk with anybody whenever you like. But I'm here to report on our fiscal year that ended in on June 30th of this year. It needless to say, it was, I guess the only word I keep coming back to is remarkable. It was a remarkable year for us, as it was for everyone else. Obviously, we were one of the first spaces to close for the pandemic. And we were one of the last to really begin to open up. And this last fiscal year was definitely not without its challenges, but we did have some bright spots. It a lot of good recent news as well as we move forward. So first, I want to say we were that the interior of the Bankhead Theater where the seats are was closed for the entire fiscal year due to the pandemic. We were not able to have a performance per county guidelines. So and then also many, most of the Bothwell Art Center was not available for for events as well. And so that resulted in us canceling or rescheduling about 200 events and programs for the entire year, which was unfortunate. But the fortunate thing is that we're they've been rescheduled for this year and we are able to do many of those. But in spite of that closure, we were able to deliver over 103 or deliver 103 different programs while we were while the theater was closed to the community. And I'll just start off with our educational program. So we did have 38 art classes and camps online and some were actually in person, including one of my favorites was a songwriting camp by Chrisanne Sweeney, a local teacher and musician. We had colored pencil and watercolor camps and art history and drawing courses as well. And these were courses where people could pick up the items and learn it online. And we were able to deliver that. I was very happy that we could do that for the community. We also had 39 virtual events throughout the year. Three of those were open mic performance on Zoom, which was really remarkable and went very well. We had 12 live speaker events with Ray to Rose Speaker Series and Quest Science Center, including a six-part National Geographic Speaker Series that we were able to do online and provide that to the community. And then the other one that I was really proud of that we we were able to pull off is we had 15 Vineyard Vibes performances. So we couldn't have people come to the theater. So we brought live performance to our patrons into the community. And this was all for free. And so what what we did was we worked with Retsal Vineyards and their stage. And we solicited local, well-known artists to come and perform. And we filmed their performances and then we put them on, put them out on a weekly basis. So groups like Luna Fish, Michael Mcnevin, the singer songwriter, Brian Maggi with this comedy and Faith Alfred, and Matt Fenders, the Livermore Amador Symphony, the Livermore Valley Opera. We work closely with all of those groups to make sure that they were producing something and putting something out. Because that ultimately is our mission is to provide a broad range of arts opportunities and experiences to engage our diverse community. So that was a great success. I felt in spite of everything, we're able to do that. We also had touring artists that were doing live performances as well that we were able to stream with groups like the Moody Blues and Pink Martini and Natalie McMaster. So we did several of those throughout the year. We did. We also did a lot of special events, I would just call things that we did for us or for the community. We had, we hosted one of the first Livermore chamber mixers online. And I got to do a virtual tour of the theater, which was fun. We we had a an event outside in front of the theater to honor the the one-year anniversary of us closing to commemorate that. We had a live performance out in front and that was free to the community. We also were a polling place in last November for for the the election at the Bothwell Art Center. So we were able to make that available. And then we had we did, we were able to do a virtual fundraiser. We called it the Best of the Bankhead. And we raised over $200,000 with that virtual fundraiser. And we're so grateful for all that support. And later in the year, we were able to start doing some in-person events. And we started with films because movies were okay. So we did Methanol on the Roof was our first event back in the theater in March. And we've been doing films ever since. We also started doing some concerts in our courtyard with local artists starting in April. And it's been such a a good experience for us. We've decided to continue with that. And so we will be doing those you know, as as long as we can. And it's a great way for us to support local musicians and local artists and give them a platform. So for me, you know, personally, as a musician myself, I know how hard that is. And I wanted to give them that space. The other bright spot is we had Art Walk even in October last year, kind of during the height of everything. We were able to do it safely. It was a very condensed version, but we we did it. We so I was happy we were able to to pull that off. And and we were also allowed to open up the gallery. And so people could come in and view the artwork in the lobby. The one that was really, I was really happy with was the partnership with the Quest Science Center. And it was an art and code exhibit that we did during the pandemic, during the closure. And we were able to have people come in and view the artwork and interact with it as well. And then another in-person we did event we did was with the Pedrosi Scholarship Foundation. We were able to have them do a recognition event for the scholarship recipients back in May. And all those things were able to do safely and according to all the county guidelines. And so we we did as much as we could in person and online. And just a reminder, when we started the year, we had reduced our staff by over 80%. And anybody that was on an hourly rate, we had to reduce to zero hours. And all of our salary staff took a 40% pay cut. So we were able to do all of these events. Over 100 of these was essentially less than 10 staff for most of the year. And I just want to say how proud I am of the staff for doing that and bringing them there. It was not easy. Financially, obviously, it was a difficult year for us on paper. Earned revenue was down by 93%. So if you think about earned revenue, that's our ticket sales and our rentals. So that was a significant drop in revenue for us. And then contributive revenue also went down a little bit, but our expenses obviously went down as well. Our primary expense for the year was personnel costs. It was important to us to keep the personnel that we had. And we also wanted to provide that for the healthcare benefits for everybody, even the ones that weren't working. So we were able to continue to do that. And then by January of 2021, our our cash flow had gotten much better. And we were able to bring back most of the regular staff back to work. So we made some good progress kind of at the midpoint of the year. And we did apply for and receive the PPP loan, the paycheck protection loan. We received two rounds of the paycheck protection, paycheck protection, paycheck protection, the PPP loan, excuse me, I'm sorry. And then we also received the EIDL loan. And the PPP loan is a forgivable loan. And the way it works on an accounting basis is it's an obligation for us for this for the last fiscal year. But the first round has already been forgiven. And that counts as a contribution for this fiscal year. And we're applying for forgiveness for the second round in the coming weeks. We also received an estate gift in at the end of the last fiscal year, which is when we recorded it and we were able to sell. It was a home that somebody left to us and we were able to sell that home in the middle of this last fiscal year. So we sold that for about $670,000, which is a very significant donation for us. It was our first estate gift. And that's a result of a program that we had put in place several years ago to encourage legacy giving for the organization. So financially, it was it was a difficult year, but we came out as far as a cash perspective, actually pretty well. So I was pleased with that. And then also, I just want to mention in regards to the staff at LV PAC, the ones that did, where we were able to hang on to, did a wonderful job. And there were several that were waiting to come back. And as soon as they could come back, we we asked them to come back. And we're pretty much fully staffed at this point. And I was, I was actually really happy because you've been hearing about this kind of great resignation. And we haven't really seen that with our staff. They've waited patiently and they've been able to come back back to where they were. So in spite of everything, that was a great relief to us. And I could tell you a lot of stories about what they went through and how difficult it was for us to to reduce their hours and do all these things and still have them hang in there and be such a support and a great, do a great service to the organization. It just tells me how much they care about the space that we have and how important it is, they think, for the community. So I can't say enough about the staff. We have just an incredible staff and they do a great job. So that's kind of what happened for the year. I'll just, I wanted to say a few more things. We did start our first in-person concert inside the theater in July. So that would be with this fiscal year with A.J. Croce. It it sold out. It we had a few more sellouts and then the Delta variant came in. Yeah, things slowly kind of tapered off. It, I would say, kind of through the early part of the fall, we've been missing about a third of our audience, which is fine, it's understandable. And we also still have this masking requirement that's required by the county for people regardless of vaccine status. And one thing we decided to do, starting on October 1st, is require all patrons to show proof of a vaccine or negative COVID test. And we are not required to do that by county standards. But I felt like it was an important thing for us to do for our patrons and for our staff. Yeah, it it went fine. I was pleasantly surprised. We didn't have a lot of pushback. And it's gone very smoothly since we started doing that. And I know our staff feels better that we're doing that. And the other thing is the performers are asking about it as well. So it's important that we we do as much as we can to keep people safe. And then on the fundraising front, we did have a good, very good first quarter of this fiscal year. We did have our gala with Vanessa Williams and we raised about $475,000 with that. We also are at a milestone as far as our membership goes. We're almost to 1,000 members, which is the highest we've ever been. We're over 970 member households. So our donor base has really grown over the last year. And it says a lot for what this community does and how much they support the arts and the community. And then we were also very fortunate to receive a federal grant, the Shutter Venue Operators Grant. Yet we applied for this grant in April. And we were notified of the award in August. And we received that award. And the award is roughly about 45% of what your annual earned revenue is on a regular basis. So for us, that was about $800,000. And then the program had a supplemental grant as well. So if if there was still money left over in the in the pool, you can apply for the supplemental grant, which we did, which was roughly half of the initial grant. And that was another $400,000, which we also received. So we got about 1.2 million in in grant money, federal money. It's in our first quarter of fundraising for this year, we've raised over $1.8 million, which is that's usually about what we do in one full year. So it's a it's been a really good fundraising year for us to start off. And with those funds, it's going to carry us through this year because it's still kind of there's a lot of unknowns about programming and where things are going to go and how how we're going to stay afloat, but it's going to keep us through that. It's also going to allow us to work on some infrastructure within the facility and update some of our infrastructure, which we've been really needing to do. We put off for a long time. And then what's in my mind, kind of the biggest thing, and we've been working on this for a long time. It's been in our strategic plan, is we we've been working on getting it to a point of long-term sustainability. And we've just drafted an investment policy and we're going to use some of the other funds that we've been able to raise to lay the groundwork for an endowment fund. And we are planning on fully funding an operating reserve and a capital reserve. It we're we're looking long term now, which is really put us in a good, secure place. And I we wouldn't have been able to do it without the success that we've had in the fundraising over the last year. And especially some of the grants and things like that that we've received. So even though last year was probably the most challenging year of my professional life, it's coming out to be something that's going to be really positive for us in the long run. And that'll allow us to move forward with some of the things that we want to do long term as an organization, as far as fulfilling our mission. And a few other things I want to just make note of. This year, we've also have some new leadership on our board of directors. Denise Watkins is our new board chair. Adley Yonker is our board vice chair. And if you don't know Denise Watkins, she was also the chair of the UCMR said Board of Trustees. She was very involved in Pleasanton Education Fundraising for many, many, many years. And she's been on our board for several years now and is going to be a great leader for us. And really looking forward to working with her as we move forward. We also recognize that issues like diversity, equity, and inclusion are really important for us. And it's also important in the arts industry. And we've already invested in not only we're looking at programming, but we've invested in training for our staff and for our board on diversity and increasing the diversity in what we do and who and our volunteers and our staffing and our leadership. And that's a real priority for us moving forward. So we're taking that very seriously. We want to continue to invest in arts education and outreach. It's we are continuing to do community events, free events for the community out on the plaza. We just had the Filipino Bario Festival and the Taste of Africa event last month. And we have more events coming up in the coming months that will be for the community. We're also continuing to have reduced ticket prices for students and military. And we just started to work with, I'm really pleased with this. There's an organization at Livermore called Music Pathways. And they do music instruction for for underprivileged students in the district. And part of the program is they get to keep their instruments once they're done with the instruction. And then I've been working with them to provide tickets for our performances at $8 and to make sure that they can come and participate in the theater and what we do as well for them and their families. And ultimately, you know, my goal is to activate our spaces pretty much every day. And we're not there yet, but I think Livermore is getting close to being ready for something like that. And and it's not just about having things inside the theater, but it's having things outside the theater, in the courtyard, online, at the Bothwell, in the schools. It, we really want to be a presence in this community, a positive presence and supporting the community through the arts, as we know what it what effect it has on people, on the quality of life for all the members of our community. And and it's our goal to make sure that we're able to do that in a responsible way and in a way that is sustainable for us, but also serves the community and in the greatest possible way we can. So that's that's kind of my my report. Is there any questions you might have?
I will get to that in a second. I just want to say thank you for the very comprehensive report. And glad to see that you're surviving the pandemic. It's not easy for your kind of organization. And it's great to hear that from a financial point of view, things are getting pretty sound footing. And and despite the pandemic, you're making and continuing to make an impact in the community. So thank you. I see Councilmember Carling would like to say something.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Chris, very much for that very thorough report on the activities at the bank. And I just wanted to second something that you mentioned earlier. Sue and I have been to now three, three shows since I think the first is September. And I will, I wanted to reiterate that, you know, I'm very, I think it's very well done the way that you ask people to show proof of vaccination or COVID testing. That goes very, very smoothly at the front, the front door. And I would also say that when you ask people to continue to wear their masks at the beginning of a show, I think you do it with great humility and great patience. And there are, and again, to reassure the public, there are folks there in the audio or in the building that will come over and ask you to put on your mask if you don't have it on. And they, and I saw some folks do that. And they do it in a very respectful and polite way. So again, I I applaud you and the staff for making that all run very, very smoothly. And I know that I, we felt, we felt fine being in the in the auditorium with those, both the checks at the at the front door, as well as the expectation that everybody wears their mask. So again, congratulations on getting through a tough time and continued success in bringing in high-class acts and entertainment. So thanks again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other council member wish to say something? Okay, well, well, thank you. I want to ask the city clerk at this point, this is a, this section of the agenda. Do we usually take any proclamations and presentations? Do we take public comment on this part of the agenda?
Good evening, we generally do not take public comment during presentations and proclamations.
Okay, good. What's up next is the citizens forum. Anybody wishes to comment? They can during that. And so thank you very much, Chris. Again, very thorough. It really is good to see the how well you guys are doing despite everything. So
Thank you very much.
We're on to citizens forum at this point. And could the city clerk, could you please explain to people how they can participate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'll just add that, you know, we're not going to deliberate on anything we hear. And that we will allocate at this portion of the agenda meeting 30 minutes. So if at eight o'clock, if we're not done, we'll end the citizens forum at that point and then reconvene it at the end of the meeting. So could we, the city clerk, could you then moderate the process of bringing on the people who wish to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. Alan, please unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Alan Marling, Livermore resident. I learned from the East Bay Times that Alameda County Superior Court Judge Frank Roche ordered the group funded by LVPAC board member Joan Sepulveda to post a $500,000 bond, which is allowed against those who file lawsuits against developments in bad faith or merely to quote, "for the purpose of delaying or thwarting low-income housing," end quote. I want to know how much is Joan Sepulveda and her rich friends willing to spend to keep working class people out of Livermore? And let's be clear, those able to afford suburban townhouses are mainly white. Blocking affordable housing is not only classist, but racist. Diversity in our, in our, is our country's greatest strength. And Joan Sepulveda is fighting against us and harming our community. Another element is that younger generations are more likely to be in debt and interested in affordable housing. So Joan Sepulveda is telling the youth they too aren't welcome in Livermore. You may wonder why I continue to single out Joan Sepulveda. There are other rich donors and Livermore residents contributing to these campaigns. But she has a unique position of also running the local newspaper, Independent, which uses to spread falsehoods against affordable housing and raise additional funds for her spurious lawsuits that harm the youth, people of color, and the working class. In all ways, this lawsuit is anathema to the stated LVPAC prerogative of diversity, equity, and inclusion. If the LPAC wishes to be not hypocritical and for actually stand for those, it should immediately expel Joan Sepulveda as a board member and all others who support the spurious lawsuit against Eden Housing. Now, if it were only Joan Sepulveda's money hurting our community, that would be bad enough. But she's But she's extracting wealth from her readers to pay for these spurious lawsuits, impoverishing Livermore in more ways than one. I worry that she would trick more residents into paying the $500,000 to further impoverish their own city. And what's the reason behind her obsession? I don't like to think it's motivated by a racist inclination to keep Livermore white. Perhaps Joan Sepulveda has come to believe all the falsehoods about the affordable housing she prints. The good news for Sepulveda and the rest of Livermore is that the housing will look fine. Its presence won't cause downtown to explode into a molten slag heap. In fact, it will enrich our community. It will even improve the experience of going to the Bankhead Theater, but I'll speak to that later on item five point three. Thank you.
The next request to speak is from Carl Wentey. Mr. Wentey, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council, City of Livermore. Well said, sir. Alan, on that previous, that previous speaker was really well spoken on the issue. The judge ruled that there is a preponderance of evidence to support the conclusion that the actions of Save Downtown Livermore directly tied to Joan Sepulveda, also Gene King, has been brought with the purpose of delaying the provision of affordable housing. That's from the judge that's ruling on the case. So, you know, why, what's this for, all the reasons behind it? My question to those that would be willing to answer is how much has this whole thing cost our generation? My generation, our generation, we care deeply about debt management, asset management and proud. Right? I'm representing my three cousins, my three beautiful female cousins that live in the city of Livermore. I live right outside the boundary, but I'm representing folks that care, that don't have time to be here, care deeply about asset management, debt management and getting it there. So like, how much is this charade? And Alan, you laid out, it's a charade and you're where she buys ink by the barrel. The First Amendment right protects that. You can print what you want, put out what you want in the likes, refold in new new packs, refold in how the money goes, get your hands slapped by the by the election commission. So we should all look into this, think deeply about this and your cost of this money. Our generation doesn't appreciate it. Thank you.
There are no more requests to speak.
Okay, I'll close citizens forum, item, agenda four, and we're on to item five, the consent calendar. And the consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and enacted upon by the city council with a single action. Typically, and members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raised hand feature as was just explained just earlier by the city clerk. So at this point, I'll start with, do we have any item on the consent calendar that a council member would like to pull? Councilmember Banana.
Yeah, I would like to pull and have staff report out on five point seven, please.
Okay, and are you going to move the rest of the consent calendar?
Do you want to take public comment? I see one raised hand.
We don't know, we could, no, you can.
Okay, I would move, I didn't move the consent calendar items five point one through five point six for approval and pull item five point seven.
Okay, and then, and there's a second from Vice Mayor Monroe. And I think, I think you were right, I probably made a mistake here. And if that's what we want to pull and we know where we, how we're going to do it. So before we vote, I will if I can, go and ask, is there any public comment on items on all those that you just up through five, six? And then we'll have a discussion on five, seven separately. So do we, city clerk, could you ask if anybody from the public wishes to comment on items five, one through six?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers.
And they do want to go on five, one through six?
We won't be able to confirm which number until they begin.
Okay, all right. So I'm, let's let's see what we have.
The first request to speak is from Alan. Alan, please unmute yourself.
Again, Alan Marling, Livermore resident, this is about five point three, which I believe is about the bankhead lease. I went to a recent performance there featuring Daily Show writers. What I didn't appreciate before going was that three of the four comics were black and these guys had to try to entertain a predominantly white audience. It was uncomfortable and embarrassing. Once Eden Housing is completed, it could house more diverse potential patrons. And with a bankhead in their backyard, you can bet they would think about going. Currently, the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center board member, which includes and that they are in course in charge of the Bankhead Theater. One board member is Joan Sepulveda, who is currently suing the Eden Project for the lawsuit judged by the Alameda County Superior Court to be in bad faith. Designed to delay affordable housing, housing needed by Livermore and passed unanimously by this council. As a result of this spurious lawsuit, Bankhead Board members are excluding working class people from living where they work along with people of color and the youth. The Bankhead Theater wishes to distance themselves from this discrimination, specifically if the L V P A C wishes to truly stand for what is equitable and include inclusion and diversity as a mission statement. They should remove Joan Sepulveda and all her other supporters of Save Livermore Downtown. If instead the Bankhead Board members continue to harm this community, the L V P A C Board members and defy the unanimous vote of this democratically elected officials, I see no reason why this council should accommodate the Bankhead Theater in any capacity. Maybe as a hypothetical, what if Livermore should charge L V P A C a million dollars a month to use the bankhead? Which is less than the Eden Project stands to lose in funding if it's delayed in courts through two thousand twenty-two, which is the lawsuit's likely goal. Let me repeat that.
So I, if I could, excuse me, I think you want to stay focused on the extension itself and not stray from the agenda item, if you could.
I, I see. Well, I will simply point out that if this lawsuit delays it, then Livermore will lose over 12 million dollars. And I think it should not be a root it should not be on a consent counter calendar to pretend like business is normal when our community is being robbed by several millions of dollars. And to say nothing of the moral obligation as homelessness and housing is one of the top two issues of California right now. And often people of color and women are ones most vulnerable to homelessness. So this is not just a monetary theft for our community, but also a moral degradation of our community. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Carl Wentey. Mr. Wentey, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Carl Wentey, fifth generation folk of Livermore. Alan, again, well said on a lot of stuff. Mr. Mayor, I don't think he strayed. This was about the ten year extension on that lease for L V PAC. Now, as I understand, doing research, having communications is if there's no change in anything, the L V PAC has the automatic right for the extension of that lease. So there's nothing we can do with no changes. That being said, it's like this, we want this to be a theater for our community. There's so much good that L V PAC does, right? So I'm not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I am recognizing the thing that Alan, the things that Alan have said about diversity, equity and inclusion and about how we, our generation would like to expand that circle of L V PAC and who makes that up, right? There was the the bank, city, L V PAC came together, there was a settlement agreement. There's a great read in the appendix of this item. Then there was a funding agreement. Then the city and the county, they got four days a year to use the building after bailing out. County gets a plaque. There's then operations and use plan and the lease agreement that goes with it. So ten more years, they have it by right. As I understand the law, how it's written in there, but to ensure the operations of a community theater, a community theater that represents as much of the community as possible. The Board of Directors of the L V PAC, I think it's been the same group and the same leadership for a long time. Like, there should be some sort of term limits, turn it over, help the make it truly of the community serving as broadly as possible. Now, that being said, y'all are doing a great job. There's so much positive out of there, how you are looking to fill the seats, activating music pathways, my dear friend Jim Hurley, getting those kids in those seats, watching the shows, everything else. There's a lot of greatness that comes out of it. But lest we not forget another ten years on this, when there is very much truth in what Alan is saying about costing our generation money and not really looking at the whole community in its entirety. I think we can do a good job. I am not a fan of ten more years with the exact same agreement that's and how the operation is. That being said, as I understand the contract law, lease agreements, there ain't nothing that can be done. So Chris Carter, keep running a great organization, keep widening the tent, keep thinking about all the community and we go from there. I don't, like, I'm a realist. I don't think Joan is going to step away from that Board of Directors. I just implore us to work together for the betterment of Livermore. And again, stop costing our generation so gosh darn much money. And just doesn't feel right. So thanks, y'all. Thank you, Alan, again, for your words, stepping up to the community and speaking with passion. Eloquence, you are appreciated.
There are no more requests to speak.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on the consent calendar items five, one through five, six. We've had a motion made and seconded. Any further comments from the council at this point? Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Marling, Mr. Wentey for their comments. I tend to agree with particularly Mr. Wentey's comment about the term limits. It is a sort of astonishing to me that that the term limits that I, as I understand, have recently been implemented or a year or two ago now, maybe really isn't going to affect the membership of the L V PAC board in any substantial way for still many years. But I also recognize to Mr. Wentey's point also is that we have an obligation to approve it tonight because that's the way the contract's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I would agree with my colleague and with Mr. Marling and Mr. Wentey. That this is something that should be looked at at a further time. We have an obligation to pass this now, but looking at the involvement of the city, particularly with regards equity and inclusion, I think is something that we should pay attention to. So I don't know if that, if that needs to be matters initiated, then so be it. That can happen later, but that would be my thought.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kik.
I would just like to say that, of course, we're passing this because we are obligated to and we're gonna, we're gonna keep to our promises. But that I would, I like Council, Vice Mayor Monroe said, I would like to see us have similar oversight that we have in some other areas of our community where we have a non-voting board member as a council member, just so we can see what's what's going on and where our our money and resources are being spent. So maybe that can be an item to talk about at a later time. Thank you.
Any other comments at this point? I would like to point out that Chris Carter and Denise Watkins have reached out to me for a meeting. So we can talk about how there can be a better relationship between the city council and L V PAC. So I'm very hope, looking forward to that meeting, but I think there are a number of things that need to be discussed and, you know, aired. And I think the only way to build a better relationship is to actually start talking. So I think with that, we have a roll call, please.
Here, just to confirm, the motion was by Councilmember Banano with the Vice Mayor as the second.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. For a roll call, Councilmember Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Five, one through six, the consent calendar passes unanimously. And now we're on to five, seven. And Councilmember Banano, you want to start us off on that?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just, since we had so much discussion about item five point seven last time, this is the procurement of replacement patrol vehicles for our LPD. And I know the staff went away and thought a little bit about it and did a little bit more research. I'd like to ask our city manager, Mr. Roberts, if he could just give us a summary of what what they found and what, just summarize what the action going forward is. So folks that were keenly interested in this last time could have a little bit more of an update.
Yes, Councilmember Banano, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd be pleased to summarize the action this evening. So you'll remember that previously, the item included the purchase of eight patrol interceptors. And as was described in the staff report, you requested the staff consider options to that that would not compromise public safety. But would see if we could include some hybrid vehicles in our current purchase. And you also asked for information going forward about what our process is. So to do that, the item this evening is a revised item which includes six of the original eight vehicles that were proposed for replacement being the non-hybrid vehicles. Under a purchasing agreement, we can utilize the purchasing agreement that we do have to purchase items outside of a formal bidding process. If those items have gone through a formal bidding process, at least as intensive as ours. And we propose to do that for the two hybrid vehicles. Timing is an issue in this particular case. Our vehicle replacement is behind schedule due to the fact that we, like almost everybody who wants to buy a car out there, is behind schedule. And fleet vehicles are at least as far behind and in some cases, much more behind than the general population of vehicles out there. So if anybody's ever been out in this past six months or eight months or so, been trying to buy a vehicle, it's very difficult to do so. So first of all, we are pleased that Tracy Ford has accepted our request to bid on the project and that we do have a project before you to replace the vehicle. So the vehicles have run longer than we traditionally do. And so we do want to make sure that some of those replacements do happen on a timely basis. By dividing this particular purchase up into the six and two, we could actually have overall the eight vehicles arrive at roughly the same time, because the two don't have to go through the same long process that the six vehicles go. So that essentially means that the hybrid interceptors would arrive at roughly the same time as the six. The, our fleet supervisor, Brian Harris, as a part of his duties on an ongoing basis, meets with the departments and explores hybrid and electric vehicles as a part of our process of evaluating new vehicle sets. And in fact, the hybrids were on our list. And we were going to propose those for our next purchase, which were about twelve months out from a little bit less, more like ten for next year, the twenty-two, twenty-two replacement. So we will continue to do that as well. In addition, as a part of our evaluation process, we currently have on site a captain's vehicle, which is the same model, that police interceptor. And the purpose of that was to essentially give the department the ability to try that out in the field. Other police agencies have had pretty good luck with that. We wanted to make sure that our department didn't discover any items and that our fleet folks didn't discover any inner inoperability issues with all of the extra stuff that has to go on a vehicle. So by ordering the two interceptors this time, we'll put them through their complete paces about all the equipment that we mounted in them, from the computers to the lights, to the sirens, to all of that stuff. And be able to get those out on the street. We'll then have them go through their twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week service, which is what we do for the police patrol vehicles. And we'll have plenty of time to see if there are any issues with that, but we don't expect to find them. We do think that the hybrid is a is a very good vehicle. It's been tested by other police agencies and we've been following that closely. And of course, that's why it's was proposed for our next purchase. So we're moving two of those vehicles earlier in time. We continue to put the captain's vehicle through its paces and at least initially, we haven't found anything out of the ordinary on that. And then next year, we do propose to have all eight vehicles become the hybrids. And I'm certainly available if you have further questions on this purchase.
Okay, thank you, Vice. Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I just want to appreciate the responsiveness to our last council meeting, and both the checking back on what's been done, giving us the future, what will be done, and then adjusting what is being done. I really appreciate that. I do want to also note that, you know, of course, in 10 months, we'll ask for full electric vehicles, so do be prepared for that. Just kidding.
So in response to that, which is, you know-
Maybe I'm not kidding. Okay.
Well, we are evaluating essentially the other experiences that other departments are having with full electric vehicles. The major, in fact, the Tesla SUV has been introduced by some police departments as a full electric vehicle. It hasn't been put into full service. It's being used essentially as a backup patrol vehicle by other agencies at this particular time, and at least in our area, and we are tracking that. The major challenge with that is we do use the vehicles 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And of course, an electric vehicle needs to be recharged. And so and in fact, I think that's the barrier that most police agencies are facing with turning essentially to 100% electric fleet for their frontline patrol interceptors. Now, there's a whole number of vehicles in the city that don't have that operational requirement, and we actually do have several full electric vehicles that we are contemplating bringing onboard, and that don't have to meet those same sort of standards. So we're keeping our eye on that one as well, as well as, of course, all the charging infrastructure necessary to recharge an entire fleet overnight.
I really appreciate that follow-up. I, you know, as you no doubt gathered, I was making a light comment, and boy, that was a full response, and I thank you so much.
Well, and I want to do a special call out to our fleet folks who constantly monitor what's going on in this front, because you asked us to balance two things, which is pushing as quickly as we can, but also making sure that whatever we do can meet the demands of what we place those vehicles into. And in this particular case, the police interceptors are probably the vehicles we use the hardest out there. So thank you.
Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, this, thank you as well, you and, and Mr. Harris, and the rest of the staff who worked on on doing a little more digging and coming up with this plan, which I think is a very satisfying result. Appreciate the members of the public who also inquired about this. I think that, you know, I'm always pushing for us to be a leader in this area, but I also really appreciate that there are considerations for these vehicles in particular. I think we want to move out in this, you know, aggressively, but rationally, using, you know, what we have as, you know, the best knowledge we can. We don't want to jump into something just to, to look like we're moving forward aggressively on something. We want to do it with a lot of thought, and, and make sure we're, we're getting into the best technology we can at the right time. So I really do appreciate the balance you've drawn here. I think the, of this close with mentioning that we are looking forward to a transition plan for our whole fleet, which again, would take into account all the different functions that all of our vehicles take into account. Some will be able to be transitioned, I think, to full electric more quickly. And there's a lot of exciting news on various types of electric vehicles, whether they're fuel cell based or full battery based, but I'm just very excited about this, and, and again, appreciate it. And we'll look forward to when we can see at least a framework or high-level plan for when we, when we move our whole fleet in this direction. So, so thank you very much. And if no one else will, I'll move approval on item 5.7.
I see. Councilmember Kik?
And I will second what you said and second the item.
Okay, and I'd like to ask City Clerk, did we already ask, we asked for public comment on five, one through seven? So I think, do we need to ask that again on seven?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, was that, we do need to ask again?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, great. So I'd like to ask for, is there any public comment on five dot seven?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close it on five dot seven. The five, seven has been moved in second degree. Any further comment from anybody? If not, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kik?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We're on to a public hearing, six dot one. Public hearing and adoption of a resolution of formation to establish a wine heritage district in the Livermore Valley. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, again, and I'm going to introduce Adam Van de Water, your Economic and Innovation Director, to give us an overview of the staff report.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Adam Van de Water, your Innovation and Economic Development Director. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you a resolution to form a wine heritage district in our beautiful and historic Livermore Valley. The Livermore Wine Heritage District is a benefit assessment district affecting 51 wineries, and it's sponsored by the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. Throughout the spring and early summer of this year, the Wine Growers Association collected signed petitions requesting formation of the Wine Heritage District from 24 wineries. Petition was accompanied by a management district plan, which specified the boundary, services, budget, cost, collection, duration, and management of the district. Per the management district plan, the wine growers, acting as the owner's association of the district, would collect 2% of gross direct consumer sales within the California district boundaries, provide specific marketing, brand awareness, advocacy, quality enhancement, and education efforts to increase winery sales and revenues. In the first year of collection, this is anticipated to equal approximately $693,000 in total revenue, replacement of and augment to the voluntary contributions that have previously sustained the Wine Growers Association. The City of Livermore will act as the lead agency, and if approved, would contract with HDL companies to collect and remit the assessments to the wine growers on a quarterly basis. Then council considered the resolution of intent to form on September 13th of this year. There have been a few changes to reduce the overall assessment, which provide the necessary support material for tonight's council consideration. As reflected in the management district plan, which is in your packet, and is an exhibit to the resolution before you this evening, the boundary of the district has been reduced to exclude the cities of Pleasanton and San Ramon, and the five-year term originally announced in the petition drive to begin on July 1st will still sunset five years later on June 30th, 2026, but assessments will not be levied until January 1 of next year, 2022, such that the term of collections will only be four and a half years. Also, Alameda and Contra Costa Counties, and the cities of Dublin and Danville, have each approved resolutions consenting to formation of the Wine Heritage District, and these are included in your packet as well. As lead agency, the City of Livermore will still collect 2% of assessed assessment revenues, which in turn are 2% of total gross direct winery sales, to cover administrative costs. The wine growers will also cover the one-time legal formation costs of the district and annual required auditing costs. On October 11th, this council held a public meeting to receive testimony on the formation of the Wine Heritage District, received three speakers in favor of formation and zero speakers in opposition. Last Friday, the city clerk received a written protest from one winery opposing district formation. And here we show the updated map of the district, reflecting these changed boundaries, and including those entities who passed Resolution of Consent Form. In summary, council has met the requirements of the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, and all relevant information is included in your packet. I am joined tonight by Brandy Addington, the interim director of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, her board chair, Stephen Kent-Mirasue, and their formation consultants, all of whom are available to answer any questions we may have. Let's conclude staff's presentation, and I return it to the mayor to open.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, I have a script to read here, because this is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution of a formation to establish the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. So bear with me as I go through this, because it's a fairly formal process. So this is the time and place of the public hearing for the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. And before we get into the real formality of opening the hearing, some remarks. So first, some rules about speakers. Anyone wanting to speak must use the raised hand feature, star nine if calling in, when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public hearing opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. And once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. When you speak, please give your name, and if you wish to be counted in protest to the formation of the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District, the address of the affected winery, for which you represent, and the grounds for your protest. Each speaker may speak once, and will have three minutes to speak. Second, some rules about the petition process. If you have not submitted a signed petition to form the district or wish to protest its formation, you may sign and give either the city clerk's staff located outside of City Hall at 1052 South Livermore Avenue, at any time before we close the public hearing. Please be sure to mark and sign your petition or protest before you turn it in, since unmarked or unsigned documents cannot be counted. A representative of the city clerk is standing in front of City Hall, located at 1052 South Livermore Avenue, to receive them. Once the hearing is formally closed, no more documents may be presented. A short recess will be taken to gather any documents received in front of City Hall. Once the meeting resumes, all documents submitted will be reviewed by the city clerk under the law. The ballots are disposable, public records, and open for inspection during and after tabulation. State law requires that all petitions and protests are weighed, are weighted based on the dollars to be assessed on each parcel in the district. If there is a majority protest, the assessment process is ended, and we cannot take any further action. If there is not a majority protest, the council will have the authority to approve the assessments. Third, how we will proceed at this hearing. After we formally open the hearing, there will be, we've already had a presentation by staff about the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. After that, next, we will receive public comment. Then any questions presented will be answered after everybody has had the chance to speak. And depending on the number of questions, we may have a short break to compile replies to the questions. After that, I will again ask for any more ballots, and then close the hearing. And to say your patience, cooperation is sincerely appreciated. The public hearing is now open. So we're, we've had the staff presentation, so that benefits the audience, because now, based on that, you, we, we now can have the public comments from the audience. So do we have, I guess, at this point, City Clerk, do we, do you need to explain how, in more detail, how they can participate? And then we can start the, see if anybody wants to address, anyway, if there are any public comments.
Mayor, I do believe you explained how to participate. At this time, members of the public can use the raise hand feature to let the mayor know that you'd like to submit a public comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're opening the hearing now, and do we have anybody who wishes to comment?
Yes, Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first is from Stephen Mirasue, followed by William Smith. Mr. Mirasue, please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, good evening. City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to thank Adam Van de Water for all of his help and support in moving this Wine Heritage District forward, and for the city council's approval throughout the course of this process. I also want to thank our collection of amazing wineries here in Livermore Valley, who recognize how valuable it is for us as a group to create an opportunity for Livermore Valley to assert itself as a wine-growing, a world-class wine-growing region, and to band together to make sure that we are addressing really the fundamental need of our valley, which is more visibility, creating a mechanism to fund more marketing, to create greater visibility, and ultimately greater participation in wine country in Livermore, and ultimately greater sales. This is really about making sure that we have an opportunity of furthering the financial fortunes of the wineries here in the valley, all of the wineries that would be under the assessment district, within the assessment boundaries. I'm really proud of the fact that the Wine Heritage District Steering Committee, of which I am a member, has reached out on numerous occasions to all of the wineries who would be assessed under this, under the creation of the, of the Heritage District, to get their feedback, and to get their, their, to be able to promulgate what it is that we're trying to accomplish, make sure everyone understands what it is we're trying to accomplish. And we've done the best job we possibly can to make sure that all of our members are informed, all of our members had an opportunity to ask questions, and all of our members had an opportunity to speak up months ago about what it was that the Heritage District stands for, and what it is that we're trying to accomplish. I appreciate so much the support of the city council, their understanding, your understanding, of what it means for this valley to be healthy, not only in terms of the wine quality that it's producing, but its opportunity to address a larger audience on an ongoing basis, and to do it in a way that is fundamentally shared and fundamentally together, as an organization that stands strong to promote what it is that we do extremely well, which is make world-class wine, and, and provide world-class hospitality. So thank you, city council. Thank you, Adam Van de Water, for all of your help in moving this process forward, and I appreciate and, and thank you again for your support in this final vote.
Next request to speak is from William Smith. William Smith, please unmute yourself.
What do I do with this? Hi, it's William Westover Smythe. Can you hear me okay? Yes, you can. Okay, I'm president of westoverwinery.com Incorporated, located on the western side of Palomero Road, 34329 Palomero Road, backing the city of Union City. I'd like to comment, too. When Stephen Mirasue said that they reached out to all the wineries, that's absolutely false. I never heard anything at all until October of this year. Might be of interest to note that my great-great aunt is recognized by the Napa Historical Association, the first woman winemaker in California, going back in 1881. So at this time, I'm asking the city council to delay implementing this resolution, approve a Wine Heritage District until some very critical concerns and flaws in the resolution are clearly addressed. Concern number one, why are we duplicating the efforts of a well-established Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, which for over 30 years has claimed membership and dues collection to accomplish the very same things that this Heritage District claims to try to do? Number two, why are we acting, having a resolution where the proposed borders are not well-defined? For example, is this only to include wineries in the Livermore AVA? What are the well-defined borders and boundaries? The map on page six is clearly vague. Even a member, which is Adam, by the way, of the Livermore Planning Department, during a telephone conversation, admitted the map is vague and lacked details important to this project. So for example, I don't even believe our wineries in the Livermore AVA. Are you going to approve a resolution where it's impossible to tell by the map if our wineries even within the boundaries of this resolution? And why is Ruby Hill and Rabino Winery allowed not to be included? They're two of the largest and most profitable wineries in the Livermore AVA. Concern number four, with Alameda County taxes among the highest in the nation, at about 10.5%, why are we adding 2% on to consumers to pay? This is clearly not fair. We should not implement a resolution that was not clear how and when the fees will be calculated. Where will the numbers come from? Number six, it is not clear how a winery can be excluded from this list. If you can arbitrarily add a winery which may not be in the AVA, why not include a winery in Oakland or Berkeley? Where are protest provisions in this resolution? There are none. The budget for marketing and brand awareness is 35%, yet the majority of the budget goes to administration. And lastly, like most government programs, this probably is not going to end in five years, it'll go on forever. So respectfully, I ask that the board here approve us to delay this, and if you do not delay this resolution, I would ask that you approve the resolution with our winery being excluded from the Heritage District. I'll be pleased to take any of your comments. I'll be pleased to take any of your comments or questions.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address us?
There are no more requests to speak, Mayor.
Okay, I think the next step is the number of questions were asked and so step four.
There's another hand up. Sorry, Mayor, there's another hand up.
Who did?
There's, there's another speaker.
Carl Wentie just raised his hand.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wentie, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Carl Wentie. I apologize. I was trying to find that pesky raise your hand button. So apologies on the delay. Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. William Smythe, humbly sincerely apologize for not having had better communication on this all the way through. Stephen is the president of the Board of Directors of the Growers Association. I am the vice president of the board and we have got a good board in place. That said, there's existential threats, existential crisis and the ability to fund that organization currently with how those dues are set up and the likes. We're at a point where it's going to fold and that's the reality. And I think we've you can dig into those details, but there's no long-term sustainability with the current dues mechanism. So we can look to the past and say, yes, there has been a functioning growers association. But we as the board of directors of that association and the owners meeting and the outreach and, and, and obviously it wasn't perfect outreach because we missed you trying to get to everybody. That sincerely apologize. Would love to sit down, you, me, Steve, Brandy, talk through this, what this looks like and how it's structured, how it's set up, what the maps look like, what the due structure looks like, how we're looking to get after the, the board in terms of spending that money for the benefit of our region, for the benefit of the good of our wine country. And so, yes, our, our current appellation, our current AVA, the Livermore Valley, it starts at the peak of Mount Diablo and comes to the east down Diablo Range and goes to the west around, picks up Sanol, comes down through around some of the peak or some of the hills in the South Valley and then the southern hills of Livermore. So it is a big appellation. We're looking to address that, get Livermore back to what it should be. That said, existential threats abound. I implore the council to move forward with this as there's been a lot of detail, a lot of work, a lot of dot and i's, cross and t's. Thank you, Mr. Van de Water, for your support in this. Thank you to those that leaned in and spent the time to, to make this happen. This is a board represented by, by those wineries that are paying dues. And so it's, it's had to get to a certain number. It doesn't have to be unanimous and I apologize that we haven't spoken to you in advance. So that being said, please implore the council, move forward with this. It's good, good for the goose, good for the gander. And again, Mr. William Smythe, I apologize. Reach out. I'll reach out. That's all.
Hey, any other people who wish to address us?
There are no more requests to speak, Mayor.
Okay, it is a complicated process we're in right now. I believe we're at the stage of responding to the questions that were asked. And as I would ask the city clerk, do we need to take a, a break to compile the answers to those questions or are we good to go?
Mayor, I'm going to defer to Mr. Van de Water.
Mr. Mayor, this, I did have a conversation with Mr. Smith a few days ago. We did discuss the contours of the, the boundaries of the district. It does appear the district, while at a fairly thirty thousand foot view of the appellation, does follow the contour of the ridgeline along the west side of Palomaris Road. Westover Wines is included in the appendix to the main.
Can you, excuse me, but I, I think the questions were numbered and the question to you was, do we need to take a break before you answer them? So is your answer, no, you don't need to take a break?
Apologies, the only reason for the break was to confirm that there were no additional protests or petitions submitted to the clerk prior to the council action. So I would turn it to the clerk to see if anything has been, has arrived this afternoon.
I apologize, Mayor. We did have one opportunity for a break to assemble questions if there were a great deal. I don't believe Mr. Van de Water needs a break to answer the questions, but I will need a break once he's complete to go ahead and gather any additional petitions that have been received as we have a number of staff standing downstairs.
Okay, so here's, okay, so I know we had a couple of opportunities in the script for this thing for breaks. So the first question is, no, no break is needed before the questions are answered. So I would request, since the questions coming in were numbered, that you answer each question numer, you know, say question one and what the answer is, just so we're clear, because I'm not I don't have a good enough memory to remember all of the questions in the order and to know which one you're answering when. So if you could do that, I think that would help not only me, but maybe some others. And I think the last question that I think it was, is it possible to go move forward by excluding this particular winery from the action? So I think that was the seventh question. But anyway, please proceed question one through and with the answers.
Happy to answer the questions. Do we have a list of the questions? I don't have a numbered list before me.
Okay, they were at.
Pardon? The numbered list is in the ancillary material that we got from Missileum. For Mr. Smythe, it's one through twelve.
Right.
It's today's supplementary?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I think it's best, they were numbered, they were asked and it would be easy to keep track of things if you told us which question you were answering.
Pulling up supplemental materials now.
Mr. Van de Water, would you like me to share my screen?
That could be really helpful. Thank you.
And so the first question about being included within the AVA. There's, there's two issues here. One is the map, which as you can see in your packet in the management district plan does not list the level of detail to have certainty of which parcels are in and out other than the entirety of some cities like Livermore, Dublin and Danville and parts of Alameda and Contra Costa County. But it does appear that that line follows the line on the Wine Growers Association website, which is the top of the elevation on the west side of Palomaris Road. That said, it does list in the appendix to the management district plan the, the specified wineries that are contained within that area. And it does include and list Westover Wines in that appendix. The second one, we will not realize any benefit from this program. I have no way to answer this on behalf of Westover Wines. The use of the funds here are to market the entire region to the broader public. And to the extent that a customer would get that marketing material and end up at Westover Stewart's step, there wouldn't be a benefit. The design of this district was designed to be proportional benefit. So those wineries that have higher sales pay a larger percentage of the revenue tier as a percent of direct consumer sales in the district. So it is designed to be benefit by under state law. But I I have no way to know that the customers that go to individual wineries, but that is the design. On question number three, our sales will not be increased by this project. Again, the, the goal here is to raise the quality, the education and the awareness of the AVA, as has been mentioned by the chair of the Wine Growers Association. And the design and hope is that each winery there would benefit as well.
Excuse me a second. These are not questions. But in the presentation to us, there were certain things that were phrased as questions and there were not twelve. So I'm, you have to forgive me, I'm a little bit confused as to how we, you know, this is a complicated process and I really want to do it right. We were asked, I believe, I, I think seven questions. And we were supposed to answer those seven questions. These, what's on the screen now are not questions per se. I think they're connected to the questions, but they're not the way the questions were asked. So I, maybe the city attorney can help here. But I'm, I'm just want to, I'm confused frankly and I apologize for that. But what, how do we get through this properly? And I could ask the, either the city clerk or the city attorney to give me guidance on it.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alacola. With regard to the formation of a district, this is the opportunity for someone to file a protest should they disagree with the formation of the district. This is not necessarily a forum for a calm response to ask specific questions with regard to the district or its effect. Per se, we have a public hearing. This is for the opportunity to, one, protest the formation or to air their grievance as far as why they don't want to have it formed. But this is a tally of the votes. This is not necessarily calm response to the questions I've been asked. I'm sure that helps.
Well, perhaps. I mean, because I'm, you know, I have to apologize. Remember I went through a script, right? And it said in the script that I read, third, how we will proceed at this hearing? After we have, after we formally opened the hearing, there will be the presentation. We had the presentation. Next, we will receive public comment. Then, any questions presented will be answered after everybody has had the chance to speak. Depending on the number of questions, we may have a short break to compile replies to the questions. After that, I will again ask for any more ballots and then close the hearing. So I'm just, that's what I just went through. And I'm trying to make that connect with what we're doing. So I'm just having.
Certainly. I will propose that the questions listed in that list you have there is no different than the Q and A you normally have with regard to any engine item. There's not, it doesn't create a unique obligation that every question must be answered in order to proceed.
Honorable, if, if I could recommend, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts. Why don't we take a short break and compile those seven questions from the oral testimony and then we can have responses? You're correct. They were two different versions of the same set of questions, but you're right, we could be more direct and see if we can retrieve a version of those seven questions that were asked during oral testimony.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we do things properly here and what's going on wasn't connecting with the procedures I just went through. So.
I have one, I mean, one of the questions.
Wait, wait, can I just, I was just about to station and recognize you if I could. So we want to do things properly. I agree with the break as a way to get our, you know, things figured out here. And now councilmember Carling, what would you like to say?
I think the one question that Mr. Smythe ended with, which is not anywhere in the twelve, is whether or not we could pass this excluding Westover Winery.
Yeah, that's the one I.
That's the fundamental question. And if, if the boundary is so indistinct, I, I question why we wouldn't consider excluding him or his winery based on his testimony.
Sure, that's, that gets to our deliberation on this. If I could, if we could just proceed, questions were asked. We said we would answer them. We're going to take, we'll, we'll get it compiled and we'll the answers may be simpler based on what you just said, but let's just take the break now. Compile those questions and answer them and we go through the process as we said we were going to. So how long a break, Mr. City Manager, do you think we need to do this?
And I'm going to actually ask my city clerk, Ms. Weber, to sort of give us an estimate of time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. If we could have ten minutes, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, we'll come back at eight thirty-five. Thank you. I would ask, uh, staff at this point, is, was that enough time to compile the answers to the questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. Staff is continuing to evaluate the situation and should be ready to join you in a couple of minutes. If we can just have a minute or two more.
Should we just make it another five, make it a round number? Let's come back at, uh, what, what, what time do you need?
Uh, five minutes would be appreciated, Your Honor.
Okay, uh, eight forty.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, uh, ask one other question, if city attorney, if you're listening, I, I believe, um, uh, Mr. Mirsu and Wenti are also available to help with answers to the questions if necessary and if appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. That would be helpful. Um, right now staff is compiling the seven questions that were asked. So the um, so city clerks also provide those to Adam Bandawater so he can respond. The questions and their answers is not necessarily a legal matter. But it is an administrative matter that obviously the council would like those questions answered so they can proceed. It's not legally required, but they're looking for the answers for you.
So I would, uh, ask Mr. Bandawater. If, uh, let him decide if he would like further amplification of the answer from, uh, those who have just offered.
As the Wine Growers Association is the sponsor of the petition drive, I'd be happy to hear from, uh, their board.
Okay, so you, uh, when appropriate, ask if they want to add to any of the answers. I understand they're standing by. Is, uh, staff ready at this point?
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, City Manager, and we've got six of the seven transcribed. We're working on the last one, so let's do five more minutes at this point.
Okay, I tell you what, um, let's just make it, uh, eight fifty.
Very good. We'll return with that fifty.
Okay, great. Thanks. And, uh, good. Thank you. Okay, it's eight fifty. Is staff ready? I'll ask Mr. Roberts.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your City Manager. And yes, we are. So I'll start off.
TB thirty needs to count them in. Can't you win again?
We can do that.
All right. And then five, four, three, two, one, you're live.
Okay, thank you. And I'll welcome back to the Livermore City Council meeting. I'll repeat what I said just before we opened the, I opened the public hearing that your patience and cooperation is sincerely appreciated. I didn't at the time know how much I meant that, but now I think we all do. So with that, Mr. City Managers Roberts, could you tell where we're at with answering the questions that were asked?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your City Manager. And we have transcribed the questions and of course, the council got to the most important one at the, at the end of the hearing, which is can a particular property be excluded from the district? And the answer to that one is yes, if the council so desires, they could exclude a particular property from the district. And so that's sort of your fundamental question. We also have the brief answers to the rest of the questions. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to.
I would, I would just know, so we can do this, but it was Mr. Smith, Smythe, that asked the questions with that one being the essential question. And I don't know if we can ask Mr. Smythe to say, can we proceed to just answering that question first before we decide to go to the answering the others? So are you available to clarify? I think Mr. Smith, if you could answer whether you would let us address numbers, that last question first before we bother with the others.
That would be fine.
Okay. So I don't want to.
By the way, it's Smythe.
That's my, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So I would, given what Councilmember Carley said, I would suggest the way we proceed now is council discussion on whether we want to, whether that's a feasible thing. But before I do that, because it's a complicated process, we've got the responses to the questions. I have to do the final call for the documents and close the public hearing. So I would ask the city clerk, if I may, I'm trying to get us through this efficiently. Can we address that, whether we are open to that suggestion? And then move through the rest of this process or do we have to answer all the questions and then go through this? So I'm sorry to throw this curve ball at you, but I think we can get through this very efficiently if we can address that last question.
So Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your City Manager. So yes, the council has the ability to, to exclude the property from the assessment district if the council so directs. You're right, it probably, there's no need to answer the rest of the questions. You could direct that to happen this evening and we could proceed with the rest of the proceedings within amended boundary to the district based on your direction.
And then I could go, I could, we can deal with that right now and then we can go for the final call for documents, close the public area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Councilmember Carling, do you have a motion at this point?
Sure, but I see Mr. Mira Su has his hand up. I wondered if my guess is he might have an opposing point of view of Mr. Smythe's.
Good point. Let's go.
Can we hear what he says?
I, I think I can guess, but let's let's go there.
Hi, can, can you hear me? This is Stephen Mira Su.
Yes, we can. I understand. I see that Mr. Smythe also still has his hand up, so I'm, I wonder if he needs to say something first, if I may.
Okay. I, if, if Bill is not on right now to, to say anything, I would ask one, one simple question. And this will answer every other question that, that the council may have and that Bill has raised. If his winery is not within the Livermore Valley AVA, he's not part of this heritage district. If he's legally without outside of the boundaries, he's not subject to any of the provisions of the heritage district, not to the assessment, not to the benefits that might accrue to him or that will accrue to him. If he is within the boundary, it's a different issue, but if he's not within the LVWA, the AVA, then it's a moot point. Everything else is, is just questions. If he's not part of this appellation, he's not covered under this, not subject to, to the regulations, not subject to, to, to any of the assessments, what have you.
Okay, I think so I still see that was Mr. Mira Su speaking, correct?
Correct.
Yes, but I, what I was saying is I said Mr. Smythe still had his hand up and did he have anything to say before you did? So I didn't hear the answer to that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If what he's saying is true, then why is Ruby Hill, which is one of the largest wineries in the area, in the Livermore Valley AVA definitely? Or Rabino Winery, which is used for, why are they being allowed to be out of it? And also from that map, you really can't tell if we're in it or not. So therefore you should delay the entire resolution until these questions are answered. If he wants to go there.
Okay. This is, let's, let's make sure understand, the council understands what's before us here. I think what I heard from Mr. Roberts is that we can exclude his wine, Mr. Smythe's winery from this action. And I think what I heard from Councilmember Carling was asking if you object to that, because my understanding is that if we are able to exclude him his winery from this, we can move forward tonight. We don't have to continue anything and we're kind of like done. So I think the direct question to you, Mr. Mira Su, is do you object to the council excluding this winery from this action?
I, I think that it's not as simple as that. I think that we have to go back to recreating the MDP, the Management District Plan to exclude another winery as we did with the one wine company that's in Pleasanton. And I think that we, that we need to potentially go back to Civitas as, as the organization helped us to create this MDP to make that legal. I, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know whether that's the case or not, but I, my, my, my overriding question would be to, to, to Bill Smythe is if his, if his winery is not within the legal boundary of the LVW, then all this. That's the question being answered right now. Is Bill's winery within the AVA? Then there's, then we need to probably go back to Civitas and readdress, and address again the MDP before we sort of blithely exclude his winery. Notwithstanding, I think, his, his, his evaluation of benefits and the like are misguided. Notwithstanding that, if he's outside of the AVA boundary, then there's no, then this is a moot conversation. He's not.
We don't, and excuse me, but we don't know the answer to that question. Is that what we're saying at this point?
He should know. I mean, he, he should know whether his winery is in the boundary or not. It's, it, there are legal lines. And sometimes it's being on one side of a street or the other side of the street. If he can legally put on his label that he's an LVW, you know, Livermore Valley AVA winery, then there are more considerations. If he can't do that and it's a federal AVA, then, then this is all a moot conversation at this point in time.
Oh, I got it. So the question is, yeah, I think just, just a second here, guys. I think getting, getting complicated fast. And I would like to go back to, at this point, if I could. It was that, Mr., was that the city attorney that was trying to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Call, your city attorney. The boundaries, the specific boundaries for the Livermore Valley Appellation are set by federal regulation. And I can, and the federal regulations, Title twenty-seven, Chapter one, some part A, part B, some parts C, Section nine point four six, Livermore Valley, contains a very detailed description of the boundaries for the Livermore Valley Appellation. So that controls, as Mr. Mira Su stated, whether you can legally label your wine as being a Livermore Valley wine. So the question that Mr. Mira Su has posed to Mr. Smythe is whether his wines are able to contain that label. And if so, then he's within the district and then you can proceed with your next question of how you'd like to proceed.
Okay. Let's, before we just proceed, I want to, I want to hear from Councilmember Carling.
I think I understand Mr. Mira Su's point, but we were also told that we could exclude Westover Winery. So I move that we exclude Westover Winery irrespective of whether he's in or out. If he's out, then it's moot. If he's in, we have the legal opportunity to exclude it according to what we heard just a few minutes ago. So I move that we exclude Westover Winery.
Councilman Carling, I would request that we, that that's the direction of the council, that they remove the parcel on which the winery is located. That way it's a very specific mapping exercise that can be undertaken.
Well, there, there, go ahead, Mr. Carling, Councilmember Carling.
Yeah.
Okay, I think there isn't an immediate second. And I have the impression that the, your earlier question is to, did the the association object to that? And I'm getting an indication that that may be the case. So I'm wondering if we're in some kind of stalemate here and that we'd better think this through more carefully. Because I think there are where there's the question of our legal power to do something. And then there's the question of whether we should. And I think there, we heard earlier frankly, that he hadn't been reached out to. And there seems to be some questions here. So I'm, I'm frankly inclined at this point to think we may have to come back at this one. Frankly, but I'll, let me hear from the other council members. Councilmember was it, I forget which one of you was first. Let me go there. Okay, Councilmember Kick.
I would like that question answered, if his wines legally have the ability to have that label. Is that something you can answer, Mr. Smythe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I currently do not put Livermore Valley Appellation on our wine that is grown on our property. I put San Francisco Bay Appellation, of which I know we are part of, but we do not put Livermore Valley Appellation on our winery's wine.
Thank you for that. I did not ask if you did put it. I asked if you legally could put it. Do you know that answer?
I've gone through the geological surveys. I spent almost all day going through it. And it's almost impossible to find the exact location of where the appellation starts and where it ends. I've spent all day doing that. I did send you a Wikipedia explanation of the Livermore Valley AVA and the wineries in it. There's an entire list that was sent with my original email and we are not on that list.
Okay, thank you for that. So I am, I am, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, but there are some questions that I think need to be answered before we move forward. One is, this would be a precedent setting activity if we were to do an exclusion. I think it would be smart for us to think through, how do we do this in other? I know it's not the same thing. It's not necessarily a heritage, heritage, heritage district, for example. But how how are other systems set up, other heritage districts, for example, if we can look into other regions? Do they just allow people to decide to be in it or is it really a geological boundary? I, this is really important to me. I think that this heritage district will have massive benefits for our community for generations to come and I would like it done right. I do not think that someone not seeing value in return on investment should be a reason for leaving a district. I, I would also like to know why Ruby Hill is not in the district. And what their reasoning was there. I just, I want this to be done, done right and done well. So I would agree that this might need to happen again. This is a long process. I know this is going to be more work for staff. Thank you to everybody that stayed this late. But the last thing I want to do is, is rush through something that could have serious effects on many, many years of success of this very important part of our economy.
Yeah, I would, before I turn to Vice Mayor Monroe, I'd say that the, I think you hit upon it. It's, it's potentially precedent setting and the question of whether we have the legal power to do something may be a dispute. It definitely could set a precedent and we need to be very careful here. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well. That's, okay, there we go. I think Councilmember Kick asked some of the questions I wanted to ask. I do. I, I despite that, I have the sense that, that maybe we could get the questions answered and have a discussion tonight and not need to wait another council meeting to do this. So, I mean, I, it sounds to me like we do have, somewhere there is an answer. Can we get an answer tonight as to whether Mr. Smythe's winery is in fact part of this district? Is that possible to do or do we need to delay that? So that would be my first question.
You're directing that question to who?
Staff, I guess. Well, I'm not even sure. I believe it's staff, but.
Okay, so let's, I think, I think at this point, let's get the recommendation from staff.
Honorable, Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, City Manager, and your staff would recommend at this point that we continue this item to address the issues that have been raised this evening. So we can all be quite certain about all of the issues that the council and Mr. Smythe have raised. And we can return this item to you at your next council meeting. So that would be November twenty-second.
Yeah, I, so I, I move that we continue the item.
A second.
Any conversation or discussion? Let's give a roll call, please.
And Honorable Mayor, before the roll call, I want to clarify that you are continuing this item to a date specific and that date is November twenty-second, your next city council meeting. If there are any challenges with legal notices or other legal requirements, your staff will take the appropriate action to return this item to you at the first available council meeting.
Okay, I think we, we have a chance to make sure we're all doing. Okay, I think we, uh, we have a chance to make sure we're all doing this carefully. And, uh, it won't harm us to do it in the next meeting. So we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passes unanimously that we continue. And, uh, even further, uh, clarification of the request for patience and understanding. So I think at this point, let me get back into where we are. Uh, let's see, we're, we've continued 6-1 to the next meeting. We're now on to 6-2, hearing an introduction of an ordinance for a general plan amendment and a rezone of the southern portion of the Sunset Office Plaza for the Wells at Sunset project. Could we have the, uh, staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your City Manager, again, and I'm going to introduce Cam Purewell, Assistant Planner, who's going to lead us through the staff report on this item.
Can you see the presentation there, Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
All right, well, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The item for your review tonight is a general plan amendment and a zoning map amendment for the project known as the Well at Sunset. The project site is located in the northeast corner of Concanon Boulevard and Home Street. The project is, the project site is surrounded by a mixture of different land uses, such as the Granada Shopping Center. Across the street, single-family residential to the north, south, and east, and open space bordering the north and east sides of the project. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment and a zoning map amendment for lots A, B, and C. This image is an example of the parcel map that is included in your packets. Lot D, located to the northern half of the site, will retain the office commercial, general plan designation, and the commercial office zoning designation. In 2018, staff approved entitlements to renovate the six existing office buildings, landscaping, and trash enclosures, and also subdivide the property into four separate lots, A, B, C, and D. Since renovation, the buildings have remained unoccupied despite significant investments in the buildings and site upgrades. Additionally, the limited range of permitted land uses under the commercial office zoning designation, and a decrease in market demand for office space, has contributed to the high vacancy. The applicant is requesting to change the site's general plan land use designation from office commercial to neighborhood commercial. The neighborhood commercial areas are defined as commercial centers located on major streets. Neighborhood commercial areas serve the convenience, shopping needs of the surrounding neighborhood, providing locations for uses that include drugstores, restaurants, grocery stores, and personal services such as salons. The Granada Shopping Center, located across the street, is an example of an existing neighborhood commercial shopping center. The planning commission was asked to review the project for consistency with general plan policies in light of public interest, health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the city, and site suitability, suitability. The general plan amendment is discussed in depth in the planning commission and city council staff reports, as well as in the attached initial study. The general plan amendment is consistent with the intent of several general plan policies, including encouraging commercial development that supports and serves existing neighborhoods. The proposed rezone will change the site's zoning to a planned development commercial, uh, or a PDC. The development code presently designates the site's zoning as commercial office. The proposed rezoning to a PDC will allow a mixture of office and commercial uses that are consistent with the neighborhood commercial general plan designation. The proposed PDC zoning retains the same development standards and permitted uses as the current commercial office zoning. Certain uses have been omitted from the proposed PD to increase compatibility with the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Omitted uses include drive-throughs, liquor stores, and bars. The purpose of the planned development commercial zoning district is to ensure compatibility and harmony with the surrounding residential area. The project site has a total of 161 existing vehicle parking spaces and a total of 35 bicycle spaces spread throughout the site. Towards, oh, sorry, let me go back here. Towards the north of the site, Lot D provides an additional 59 spaces for a site-wide total of 220 parking spaces. The parking demand for the project site will vary depending on the amount of office, retail, and restaurant uses, as well as their operating hours. As tenant spaces are leased, the property manager is required to maintain a parking inventory that demonstrates compliance with the development code. The traffic study and the initial study mitigated negative declaration conclude that the proposed project would have a less than significant transportation impact. Additionally, the project proposes, proposes improvements consistent with the city's active transportation plan, which include construction of a new bicycle lane segments along both the Home Street and Concanon Boulevard frontages. The bicycle lane proposed along Concanon Boulevard would be separated from vehicle traffic by two, two-foot wide painted buffer, as shown in the top image. The bicycle lane proposed along Home Street would be separated from vehicle traffic by a separation buffer shown in the bottom image. The applicant has held a series of neighborhood meetings with the surrounding residents. On March 31st, 2021, the applicant held a virtual meeting and shared their vision for a general plan amendment and a rezone. The proposed project received a positive response during the neighborhood meeting with one comment requesting to locate tenants that could generate higher than usual noise levels. This, these uses includes tasting rooms. Yeah, the commenter requested that these, such uses should be located away from residential boundaries. As part of the PDC zoning, such uses will be required to submit a zoning use permit, or a ZUP. The purpose of a ZUP would be to review the commercial operations of the proposed business, such as the hours of operations, business plan, and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The planning commission reviewed the project on September 21st. The planning commission discussed limiting food or beverage services to the western buildings, and suggested keeping adequate amount of, uh, space for the separated bike lanes on Home Streets, on Home Street. The planning commission also asked if a driveway connection from Catalina Drive, um, right over here, um, could be included, and also if a, uh, a walkway connection from Evan Street down here, uh, could also be part of the project. Uh, however, based on staff analysis, the existing access driveways, uh, for the site on Home Street and Concanon, Concanon Boulevard are sufficient for pedestrians, trucks, and emergency vehicles, and staff did not require additional connection requirements. The planning commission also discussed providing pedestrian access from London Way, uh, located here, uh, into the open space area. This proposal was rejected during one of the neighborhood meetings held by the applicant. Um, and staff also received comments from neighborhoods for neighbors that live along London Way opposing the connection, uh, into the open space buffer. Staff, uh, received, um, staff received 86 public comments in support and three public comments, uh, in opposition prior to the planning commission hearing. The, uh, planning commission unanimously supports the project and recommends the city council approve the general plan amendment and zoning map amendment. Uh, in conclusion, the planning commission and staff recommend that the city council, uh, adopt a resolution adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment and introduce an ordinance approving the zoning map amendment subject to the attached conditions of approval, um, and also instruct staff to file the notice of determination with the county clerk. Uh, the applicant, Orville Power, has a brief presentation for the council, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam. Can you hear me all right, everybody? Yes. Okay, great. Uh, uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, thank you, uh, Cam, for the summary. Um, I just wanted to give a little more color. Um, ultimately, we're here to ask any questions. But, um, I will start with just kind of a quick summary of our, our perspective and what's going on here. Next slide, please. So we, we acquired this property in 2018. Um, my partner and I, uh, visited the site, and we were like, wow, this is a fantastic location, great neighborhood, but the center was, um, uh, very neglected. And we, we joked at the time that, you know, it was the whole of the donut, because it was, just felt very, very dark and, 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 um, uh, not much activity when there was just a kind of a vibrant community around it. Uh, next slide. So, um, so we kind of dug in, um, you know, prior to acquiring the property, uh, we learned, obviously, the previous owner, which I'm sure you guys, uh, were aware, but they, uh, had canceled uh, many of the leases. They, uh, submitted plans for a single-family neighborhood, uh, that created a lot of concern. Um, specifics concerns were the reduction of the open space. Um, and ultimately, the plan was rejected and denied, and we acquired the site when it was in complete disrepair, uh, very similar to the picture that you see, uh, on this slide. Next slide. So, um, you know, we dug in, reviewed their development application. We held, I think we've held four community meetings now throughout this entire process. Uh, we worked with staff, we studied neighborhood demographics, and ultimately, you know, we kind of defined some, uh, guidelines for the project. Uh, one was not to impact schools. Uh, the second was we wanted to enhance the neighborhood, neighborhood service options. Um, the third was we weren't going to touch the open space, and it was going to remain. And the fourth, the fourth was we're going to create walkable option. Next slide. So we went to work. Uh, we, we haven't touched any, any buildings. We don't plan, I mean, any, uh, footprints. They'll stay the same. Um, so it was really just enhancement of the buildings, and we've put a substantial amount of money. We've redone infrastructure. We've changed windows. We've put new HVAC, upgraded the power systems. We've brought in fiber optics. We've added fire sprinklers in several buildings. We've made the entire site ADA compliant, which it wasn't before. Um, we significantly enhanced the landscaping. Uh, we put in new trash enclosures, which also have fire sprinklers now. New paving, new flatwork, uh, new lighting, and, and new signage. Uh, next slide. So this is just some, some imagery of kind of what we've done there. We've, uh, we worked with, um, uh, local artists to do some art. We've, um, we've liked what we've done so far. We think the project's coming together really nice, nicely. Uh, next slide. So, um, ultimately, what we did is, uh, you can see in this slide, extreme pizza in charming fig. Um, so the restaurant spaces are up in front. That's the only spot there's going to be restaurant. We actually have Bubbs Bagels that's going in as well. Uh, we put in grease traps and grease interceptors. Those are there. And then as you kind of move back across the site, um, you know, we're, we're bringing in a variety of, of office and medical uses. And then, you know, some other uses as well, um, fitness perhaps. Uh, we have a nail salon, uh, that's signed to lease. So, um, ultimately, the market for office is, uh, very slow. We've seen, since COVID, uh, we've seen, uh, retail comeback. Um, we've seen medical start to come back. And I think we've seen very few, a, a handful of true office users. So ultimately, this general plan amendment, which, you know, sounds like a, a, a major change, is really just a, a change of uses. Um, and we did have some concern back on building I, um, about potential noise from a neighbor. Um, that neighbor is actually located, um, across the open space, uh, behind the building. Um, it's, it's around 300 feet away, and I think, you know, putting that zoning use permit in there, you know, will give, uh, you know, the ability to, to reassess if we do perhaps get a user that, um, you know, a tasting room that wants to go in there. We feel that, uh, that potentially could be a concern. Uh, next slide. So, um, as I mentioned, you know, uses, uh, are, it's really just kind of, we're taking, you know, um, the current CO office and the future CMB uses and kind of combining them to, to add more, more viability to, to the project. Uh, next slide. And, um, you know, community benefit is we're going to be putting, uh, bike lane around the project. Um, we're also putting in senior housing project to the north, which was approved by planning commission. Uh, next slide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, we were, um, we are seeing uptick in activity. We are signing leases. Um, the ability to bring in uses that, you know, um, uh, weren't in the office zoning is very helpful, and we would just appreciate the, the support of, of city council and helping us make this project a success. Um, we, we feel it's turned out really well. Neighborhoods, neighbors are, are all very excited about having a walkable, you know, services in the area. So, uh, we'd appreciate your support on the general plan amendment, and, um, again, we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before I turn it to the council, I'll, uh, ask if there are any, uh, any public comments on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the, uh, public comment, bring it back to the, uh, council. Uh, I'll, I'll just begin a little bit, and then I'll turn it to the rest of the council members. But I was on the council when we rejected the very early proposal, and we were warned that it would be a disaster. And I'm just pleased to see, uh, what you've done here. So with that, uh, who, um, Councilmember Kick.
Uh, I just wanted to commend the staff and, um, the developer for the presentation. I, I don't think it has ever been anything, um, other than empty since I've been in town, and it's going to be really nice to see that space, um, used. We did get some, um, concern from community members about having restaurants be too loud near their homes, but I think that's, um, been well addressed by having restaurants near the frontage, the streets. Um, and I, I really doubt, um, even the loudest laugh is going to be louder than the traffic, um, that's, that's on those roads. So, um, I think it looks great, and, um, I'm happy to see that we have some, some people ready to sign leases. Uh, because seeing the sit empty, um, any longer would, would be sad for all of us, I think. So, thank you, um, for your hard work on this.
Councilmember Banana.
Yeah, I, I echo what Councilmember Kick said. I do have a couple of quick questions, uh, about the, uh, ZUP. And I didn't quite understand how that's going to be implemented, whether it applies to the, the whole parcel. Um, and then my second question, um, is relating to the area D, I guess. Mr. Purewell's presentation seemed to indicate that, I, I guess I'm confused about what the current zoning is there and whether the senior housing that, um, I think Mr. Powers mentioned on that parcel D. I, I, I just, does someone here, what are, what, what we think is going to happen on parcel D? As well as, uh, just go over again the zoning use permit strategy. And does that apply to everything, or just the parts that are on the side near the residence?
So, uh, Councilmember, this is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. Uh, I'll start, uh, by answering the ZUP question. The proposed PD zoning, uh, which is the final exhibit and is part of your staff report there, identifies by use type, the uses that will have either a CUP or a ZUP. The CUP would go to planning commission, and some examples are things like, uh, a pub or a market over a certain size, uh, or, uh, a bed and breakfast use. Those uses would all go to, uh, planning commission. The ZUP is a staff level review, and again, there are some specified uses, uh, including dog daycare, um, tourism-related uses. Those types of things would go to, um, be reviewed at a staff level. And at both of those levels, you could have some, uh, conditions of approval potentially added, or work with the applicant to, uh, to refine the description of the use to potentially make it fit in better.
Okay, so, so let me just clarify. So the, the, the consideration of what part of the project is being requested to have some of those uses would be taken into account by either staff or a planning commission?
Right, we'd look at location, uh, size, and description of the use.
Okay, fine. And then, then, yeah, and then that's fine, that. Okay, fine. And then, then, yeah, and then that's fine, that did answer that question. Then my second question was about the, the northern part of the parcel. Area D, I guess it was.
Right, and so that area would remain unchanged. And I'm going to let Cam answer the remainder of that question.
Sure. Council member Banano, that area will retain its commercial office zoning designation and office commercial general plan designation. And that prop, that site has been approved condition, through a conditional use permit for a senior care center.
Okay, so a CUP is, was authorized under that zoning for that senior housing?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I'd forgotten that. Okay, thank you. And, and I, I really like what I've heard about the project. I think it's great that we have someone who is wanting to bring those kinds of amenities to the community. I like the bike lanes. I was on the planning commission when we went through all the process of, of dealing with this initially and really glad to see it's finally going to become a vibrant area again. So thank you very much.
Council member Carling?
Yes, offer my thanks as well. Many of you know, I live very close to this location and have spent many years driving by it when it's just been completely empty and rundown. So I applaud Mr. Power and his team for the time and the expenses they've put into this because they really made a great looking area. And I certainly support the, the efforts. I also just wanted to point out if, I don't think he mentioned it, he did mention some of the murals, but I've ridden my bike through there a few times and, and the wall that is on the south side by the parking has a beautiful mural that you can't see unless you drive in or ride your bike in. And particularly enthusiastic about the quote from James Taylor that is there and I, and I appreciate the opportunity for people to come in and put those murals there. I think it's beautiful. So, and I, I attended them, a couple of different public meetings on this. And particularly the one in March, and I would concur that the residents that live in and around the area were all very supportive of the project and glad to see it moving forward. And I certainly appreciate Mr. Powers' recognition of the concerns that were expressed and his willingness to abide by those. And as a frequent and avid bike rider, I look forward to safer bike lanes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
And I, I will add my thanks as well. When I ran for office in two thousand eighteen, this was one of a, a couple sites that people said, so the thing I want you to do most on council is fix this site. And I said, not knowing nothing, sure, no problem. Obviously, I learned and I learned that it's people like you, Mr. Power, that, and the city staff working together to bring something like this to fruition. So I would add my thanks as well. I really appreciate the defining project guidelines. The, the thoughtfulness with how this will work towards building community. And yeah, so thank you, thank you. I do have one more comment, which is it's really difficult for you to define this as a place where the, with the donut missing the hole and not mention a donut shop, you know, just putting it out there.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to, you know, you know, say I agree with the previous comments. I'd also like to add the, the general perspective that we don't rezone lightly. And a key factor is, is the project good? And is it compatible with the neighborhood and what do the neighbors think? And this checks all the criteria. And I think what I objected to with the previous proposal many years ago is that the owner wanted the rezoning, take the value for that rezoning and then leave town. And in this case, this project has come in and is well deserving of the change in zoning. And so I think it's appropriate for us to, to proceed as requested. Is there a motion from the council?
Yep, I'll move approval of staff recommendation.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
I'll second that.
Okay, with enthusiasm, I think, right, you guys? So yeah, so can we have a roll call? Any further discussion? We have a roll call, please?
Council member Banano?
Hi.
Council member Carling?
Hi.
Council member Kick? Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again for bringing to the community a really great project. Now we're on to six, three. So this is the property just south of the airport. And we're talking about a number of steps here, a hearing. We have the staff report, please?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Mark Roberts, the city manager. I'd like to introduce principal planner Steve Riley, who will lead us through the staff report on this item.
Mr. Riley, you're muted.
Mr. Riley, we are not hearing you.
Mr. Roberts, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think this is the applicant Timor Testmer and for whatever reason, I got the mute and unmute, so I think Mr. Riley should be speaking.
Very good. He's unmuted now.
Mr. Riley, are you there? We are still not hearing you, Mr. Riley.
Mr. Spence, do you want to walk through this item?
So let's go ahead and Steve, if you're controlling the PowerPoint, can you hear me? And can we start with the first slide? So the proposal in this case is to take several actions. One is for the council to authorize concurrent review of a couple of different application types. So we have three parcels here that are contemplated. SMP forty is to the south of the Oaks Business Park. SMP thirty-eight there is just to the south of the airport. Sorry, thirty-nine is to the south of the airport. And SMP thirty-eight is to the west of that. It's just sort of south of the Livermore outlets there. And so the proposal before you is to have these properties developed through a process whereby we would annex them into the city. They're currently out in the county SMP thirty-eight, sorry, thirty-nine and forty. SMP thirty-eight, we would not annex at this time, but we would bring the sphere of influence that could be Livermore's influence for, for SMP thirty-eight. The request for the council is for concurrent review of the general plan and zoning map amendment. The council is required to authorize that in advance. And so we're bringing that to you and making that request. And then the second component is to authorize staff to negotiate a development agreement, which would do several things. Development agreement would focus on some trail improvements, which are to the south of the business park. Would focus on land uses that bring high-quality jobs to the city. And then also as an amenity to negotiate components that support the innovation. Finally, the development agreement would have the property owner and applicant agreeing to bring SMP thirty-eight into the city's sphere of influence. Next slide. So with that, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution authorizing concurrent review of the general plan and zoning map with annexation and pre-zoning, development code amendment, appropriate subdivisions and site plan review. And authorizing staff to proceed with negotiating terms with the property owner for a pre-annexation development agreement to be considered by the council at a later date. And with council direction tonight, we would negotiate with the applicant, work on the entitlements and bring this project back to you next year for your consideration. The council's not making any decisions tonight on any land use changes at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ask the public comment on this item. Do we have anybody who wishes to address this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close public comment on this item, bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments? How about motion then?
Move approval? Sorry.
I will second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I see none. We have a roll call, please?
Council member Banano?
Hi.
Council member Carley?
Hi.
Council member Kick? Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi, passes unanimously. So thank you. We're on now to matters for consideration. I can't, still haven't gotten used all the numbering system here, but I will. So we have our oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID nineteen emergency. Mr. Roberts, can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, honorable mayor. This is Mark Roberts, your city manager, Director of Emergency Services. All right, since the last time we were together, we've had several updates. And so first of all, has to do with Alameda County lifting the indoor masking requirements in public spaces. When essentially certain particular items are met. And so you can see on the screen there that Alameda County needs to reach the moderate transmission tier. And while the county was in that tier for a short period of time, they bounced back up to the orange tier. And the second item is either two or three have to be met. And excuse me, let's try that again. So one and two have to be met. So which is that they're in the yellow and we are not yet there. And hospitalizations have to be low and stable and that item is met. And then item three is either eighty percent of the county's total population is fully vaccinated. And currently, that is not the case. While the county has more than eighty percent of those twelve and over vaccinated, the full population is not vaccinated at eighty percent yet. Or eight weeks have passed since COVID nineteen vaccine has been authorized for five to eleven years old. The date for that will be twelve twenty-eight when that particular item is met. So while we appear to be on a path for some of these items, we for requirements dealing with masking. Effective November first, the county eased masking requirements for fully vaccinated individuals inside limited indoor settings. And again, that one comes with a bunch of exclusions and requirements. So in most settings, especially settings where the public is still present, masks are still required indoors. Boosters now are recommended for individuals vaccinated with any of the three COVID nineteen vaccines. In addition to that, children five to eleven are now eligible for COVID nineteen vaccines. And of course, they get one-third the dosage given to teens and older adults. They also get a two-shot regime, three weeks apart for maximum protection. And of course, we would recommend that anyone who is the parent or guardian of a child that age check in with their healthcare provider to determine next steps. In addition to that, for those who choose to get vaccinated, the city of Livermore in, in partnership with the park district and the school district has already scheduled three vaccine workshops to get first shots. And they're, they're listed there on the screen, the tenth, the eleventh and the seventeenth, as well as corresponding times for second shots for each of those dates. Now, at the current moment, it appears that those three dates are currently fully subscribed. But we are in the process of planning further vaccination clinics until the supply catches up with demand. In addition to vaccines for those five to eleven, if you happen to be a little bit older than that, you're an adult. We have a variety of pop-up vaccination programs, you can see on the screen there. Sundays between nine and one, it may be Sun Park on November twenty-first. And tentative late clinics planned for December, depending on site availability for November fourteenth at the Sunday's farmer's market. And of course, those particular vaccination locations are subject to, and, and you can use the county's hundred-dollar incentive program. In addition to those who are, those programs which are coordinated with the county, there are standing clinics by Access Community Health, Stanford Healthcare, and of course, numerous local pharmacies can provide essentially both initial vaccination and booster shots. And you can sort of contact those folks directly. Moving on, what else is going on in the community? City crews and city staff have been coordinating with downtown businesses over the last couple of months. And we are now at the implementation stage of the changing of the seasons. You'll remember every year at about this time, we move from having parking, excuse me, from having dining in our streets downtown to actually allowing parking in those. And of course, that corresponds with the change in weather. And of course, if you've been outside during the past few weeks, you know that the weather has gotten a lot less hospitable. In addition to essentially allowing us to change those back over to, to parking spaces, this also allows us to go through a thorough cleaning of the area. Those areas have been set up now permanently for a year and a half. And of course, that's a lot longer than we normally have those runs. So we're very excited about getting in there to clean those areas up. And of course, the major benefit is that it provides additional high-value parking and high-visibility parking during the most important part of the year for our retailers downtown. Our restaurants have had a significant period of time where the city has expanded the opportunities for outdoor dining to help us make it through the pandemic. But of course, this quarter that we've now just entered into is the most important one for retailers downtown. So we've heard repeatedly from a whole number of retailers that they are very much looking forward to getting a little more high-visibility parking in the area. In addition to areas where we are doing dining out in the street, the city has expanded dining in a variety of areas that were previously set aside for landscaping. Those areas will remain until early December. And then we will begin the process of adjusting those areas to a more longer-term scale, since some of those uses have expanded larger than their footprint would be under normal time. So we'll begin the transition back for those uses as well. Our seven-day rolling average of new COVID nineteen cases per hundred thousand population is graphed on this slide for both Alameda County and the city of Livermore. You'll see all the way back to June of two thousand with the various peaks we've gone. And the good news is we are continuing a very slow but steady decrease in the number of daily cases for our seven-day rolling average per hundred thousand. So very good news on that front. You'll see this slide indicates the difference between You'll see this slide indicates the difference between essentially starting in April of this year. For folks, and the number of cases we have of COVID-19, this is the case rate, the seven-day average for the unvaccinated population. That's the yellowish line on top. The black line is the average among the total population and the blue line at the bottom, the lowest number of cases is for those who are vaccinated. So, of course, this slide illustrates what of course we have been saying now for the past year or so. The vaccination continues to be our best tool for prevention of infection and severe illness, hospitalization and death due to COVID-19. This slide shows you the what we've done in the past month. So, you can see Alameda County on that first line. Is there fully vaccinated folks? And this is the percent of the population, twelve and over. You can see that Alameda County in October at seventy-nine percent of the population fully vaccinated and of course, as of eleven-seven had almost eighty-five percent. And in Livermore, that number jumped from seventy-two point three percent to almost eighty-two percent of the population fully vaccinated. So, we've made good progress and steady progress, both at the county level over the past month and at the city level over the past month as well. You can see that our seven-day average of daily new cases per hundred thousand comparing essentially the end of September with the end of October, the cases both at the county level and the city level have dropped. And at this particular moment, snapshot in time, the city cases per hundred thousand were just a little bit lower than the county. So, good news for both the county and the city on this front. So, next steps, we have several things that we are working on as your staff. Of course, the emergency had us essentially redo how we do city work. You'll remember that for a significant period of time until June fifteenth, a significant portion of our work population accomplished their work remotely. On June fifteenth, corresponding with the governor's order of reopening, we did bring back all staff to their work sites. But we began a process with our employees to work through essentially our with our employees to work on a remote work policy. And in addition to that, we are proposing to return to in-person council meetings in in October of next year. And we are also taking steps necessary to end our local emergency here either the end of this year or very early next year. So with that, I will turn it back over to the council. And we are having some significant problems right at the moment with Zoom, unfortunately. If you're still with us and you can hear me, congratulations. Not everybody is. My understanding is that the audio for me is cutting in and out, so I'm happy to answer any questions. And I do believe we may have lost our presiding officer at the moment, so.
You have lost your presiding officer. I'm taking the reins at the moment. And I would like some direction here. I can tell you that I was slightly distracted because of apparently a bunch of people got kicked off of Zoom, including the mayor, including Councilmember Carling. But he came back, so there we go.
Very good.
Yeah. But one moment and then I'll give you a chance. What I'd be interested, I would like some of some repetition, but I also think that maybe we should take a five-minute break and see if we can get the people who were kicked out back so that we can continue the meeting with the full complement. What's your thought on that? Your turn.
I think that one actually makes some sense. So, why don't we at this particular point take a five-minute break and we'll see if we can reestablish connections to folks. The I guess the other issue, one of the issues here is
Yes.
You have completed all of your business items. You have, you are now in the portion of your agenda where you've just gotten an update from your Director of Emergency Services. And we have lost all of our public as well at this particular point. So, this might be simply a time, and I'd certainly defer to this to the city attorney on here, where we could, we could call it an evening because I think you've got a major connectivity issue going because I'm hearing now my, my, you know, I'm getting messages back from staff spread all over that are having difficulties. And so this may be actually a widespread issue, not just a simply localized one. And so, city attorney Alcala, in other words, vice mayor, simply in the meeting at this point because we do seem to have
The vice mayor is here. The vice mayor is here. I think we have the four, the four council members. We are missing the mayor.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Kik has her hand up, so.
Very good. Madam Vice Mayor, if I can speak, you don't have the public here. So, your new rules under, that was adopted by the state with regard to conducting COVID meetings during COVID, when you lose connectivity, we either need to reestablish with the public before we can continue to take action and deliberate. And if we can't, we should adjourn the meeting and reconvene at your next council meeting. But as Mark was indicating, you have reached the end of your agenda except for your item eight, which is your managed initiated and council reports. So you are at a good point right now if you wanted to break and then adjourn this meeting until your special closed session November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one at five PM and then to your regular city council meeting after that on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Would we need any kind of a motion to adjourn or do I simply declare us adjourned?
I have a question first, though. Is that okay?
Is that okay, Mr. Alcala?
Certainly. What's the question?
Well, I see three people here. But so that's, I don't think we lost everybody, but.
You don't have the public, though.
You, you lost a big chunk of your public.
Yeah, we lost a big chunk. I'm not saying we should continue with meeting.
Okay, I can see them. Okay.
Yeah, so I did just have a clarifying question about the COVID data that you're going to be presenting because we're doing this once a month now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so the slide that we just saw was the percentage of the population twelve and over. Next time, will that be the population of five and over because that's now been approved?
Yes, it should be. And of course, it takes the county a little while to do this and we think that adds about eight percent or nine percent of the population. So, it's not perfect, but that gives you an idea. We're in the seventies as far as our numbers, not the eighties for the population five and over.
And then this isn't really a direct, I guess it's just an announcement. My daughter did get her vaccination at the Lucky over on Portola and the pharmacist was asking for help spreading the word. They're having a really hard time letting people know that there's, they have vaccines and they're ready to give them out and they don't have that long of a shelf life. For some reason, they're not showing up on the myturn.ca.gov. And so if there's any way that our staff can help get that word out that some of these smaller pharmacies for some reason aren't showing up on the state system, just even something that said something like if you can't find an appointment, try calling your local smaller pharmacies, just so parents have the information that there is potentially another option if they're having a hard time getting an appointment.
Okay, I want to just check in, Mr. Alcala, that was fine. Tell me, is that correct? Announcements are okay?
So, right now we do see that we have the public attending here. You're just down to a mayor and the council member. But you still have a quorum, so you can still proceed under the current rules.
Okay, so the fact that we have three attendees is means we have the public and so we're good.
Yeah, we have the public here and you also have a majority of your councilor presence to maintain the quorum.
Right. Okay, I would I'm a little unprepared to take the reins, I think.
So, your other option, your other option, Vice Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, is to end the meeting at this point. While we do have some public, I know I've lost some staff and we very well may have lost some public as well, so.
That's the report we're getting from the city clerk that there are still public members who.
So, you probably, while you're possibly able to continue, we might recommend that you, in an abundance of.
I will take that abundance of caution with one caveat, and that is if any council member has a pressing announcement, as did Councilmember Kik, that cannot wait till our next council meeting, this would be the time. But we actually only have three members at this point. It looks like Councilmember Banano got kicked out. I declare this meeting adjourned until next week at five o'clock for a workshop and the following week, at which point, seven o'clock, we will have a, we will reconvene for a regular city council meeting. In honor of Zoom, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.